The Andover City Council Meeting of June 9, 2020. Let's start with the roll call on my left.
Homer, City Council.
Mike Warrington, City Council Member.
Shelby Carcelary, City Council Member.
Ronnie Price, Mayor of Andover.
Troy Tabor, City Council President.
Greg Schnatter, Council Member.
Tim Berry, Council Member.
Mike Keller, Police Chief.
Donna Davis, Chief Financial Officer.
Chad Russell, Fire Chief.
Lance Onstot, Assistant City Administrator.
JT Klaus, City Attorney.
Les Mangus, Director of Community Development.
Susan Reiner, City Clerk.
Jennifer McCoslin, City Administrator.
Thank you. Tonight, we have Pastor Stephen Bishop from Generations Church to provide invocation.
Thank you for giving me an opportunity to be amongst you today. I want to say something before I get started. I want you to look around the room. And I want to know, when's the last time you sat down with your brother and broke bread and get to know who they really are? Our country is in turmoil right now because we won't reach across and have a relationship. And it doesn't really matter the color of the skin as long as the relationship and we give the ability to hear one another's pain. So would you join me in prayer? Father, we thank you for today. I thank you, God, that you're the God that sits on high and looks low. And Father, you search the hearts of men, God, and you know the condition of their hearts. Father, I pray for this city. I pray for this mayor, Lord, that as he sees, as he sees the issues of the city, God, he would, he would consult you for the direction of this city. Lord, I thank you for every council member here, Father. I want to thank you for their children. And Lord, I want to pray for those who might be wayward today. Lord, that you would call them home. And Father, for every broken home here, Father, for every minute that we've taken outside of the home, Father, that you would re-center and refocus the focus of the family. Lord, we love you with great intense love. But, Lord, you love us more. So, Father, I pray that in the name of Jesus, that your presence would reside in this meeting. And, Lord, it's not about who wins and what side wins, it's about bringing you glory. So, Lord, we thank you and we give you much praise and honor in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. We're going to say the pledge of allegiance now.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Pastor, thanks for that invocation. That was, that was awesome.
Sorry about that. I apologize. This is a part of the agenda where we would like... This is part of the agenda where anyone who would like to address the council about any topic may do so now by stepping to the podium. As always, you have three minutes and we request that you do not ask questions of council members. We are just here to listen. And state your name and your address for the record, please.
Good evening, Mayor Price and City Council Members, and thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. I'd like to extend my thanks to you all for your gallant efforts to allow the continued operation of the Andover Municipal Golf Course. The current management that you all chose as new operators are doing a wonderful job. Dick Stunts and Randy Hunt of Oaks Golf have had a very successful start and are very optimistic about the future success of the Andover Municipal Golf Course. I've spent some time meeting people that come to play there, and I've only heard compliments and gratitude that the course is there. I met a gentleman this past week. He and his son come, one lives in Mays, one lives in Goddard. His son picks him up and brings him here, and they have done this for quite some time and continue, and they were very happy to see it here. I've also visited with some people from Rose Hill, Benton, El Dorado, Valley Center, Park City, Wichita. The people are coming from all around and they appreciate... Which brings up a point that's been brought up numerous times by one council member in particular regarding yearly memberships. The question has been asked many times, how many Green Valley residents have yearly memberships? While yearly memberships are nice, I believe that rounds of golf are critical to the sustained income as well and should not rest totally upon Green Valley residents. And having said that, I do know that the numbers of memberships purchased by Green Valley residents is up considerably as well as the number of rounds of golf. It's been quite busy this year, and the COVID virus had a lot to do with that because some of the golf courses... So it was a wonderful... I've visited with a lot of people that newly discovered our golf course because their Wichita golf courses were closed, so that was a great decision, I felt like. I'd like us all to remember that, just like all of the other community assets, that the Andover Municipal Golf Course is a wonderful community asset for all of us to utilize and not expect one neighborhood to be totally responsible for its sustainability, but we are doing what we can. And so, thank you once again for allowing the Andover Municipal Golf Course to remain in our community. And you were a tough act to follow, Ronnie, because you kind of got me. One last thing. I do watch your city council meetings and your council workshops, city council workshops on Channel 7, and I was watching it on your Zoom, and you all did a great job. And I think you had some really difficult decisions to make during this COVID, especially some of the newer ones that weren't so familiar, and I just want to really thank you for that. And I appreciate your leadership going forward.
Lavanna, we've been getting the emails and stuff from you. We don't often get praise or told we're doing good, and when you send them to us, we forward them on to our council. We really appreciate it. It means a lot to us because sometimes it's, it's been a tough... Since the day we got sworn in, it's been, it's been a rough goin'. And when we hear good things from the community, it's quite humbling.
Well, I don't always complain.
Nope. But I didn't say that, you did.
I'll, I'll back that up and send it to you.
Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. My name is Glenn Snodgrass. I have interest in the 1600 block of North Andover Road and also 1600 block of North Main Street. I wanted to inform the council of a few things this evening, but I have just been notified that this city is a defendant in a lawsuit that a judge is going to meet with the attorneys this Friday. And the matter that I want to speak to you about may be in that information exchange. So for now, I'm going to hold off on addressing the council. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Could turn my mic on. I'm a little bit rattled. All right, here we go. Acceptance of the agenda. Jenny, do we have any changes to the agenda this evening?
No, we do not. We uploaded the bid numbers that came in this morning, but the items themselves are the same.
Do I have a motion to accept the presented agenda? A motion... Oh, go ahead.
So moved.
Second. Homer.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries six zero. Request to waive facility fees. We have a request... Excuse me. We have a request by Wichita's Children Theater and Dance Center tonight. Can Ms. Flynn or other representative of Wichita Children Theater please come to the podium to explain their request?
I am here. Good evening. I'm Monica Flynn, the executive director of the Wichita Children's Theater and Dance Center for the last 37 years, and I thank you very much for letting me come before you I'm a little nervous because this is about the third time I've been out of my house in three months, and so I'm just letting you know that right now. Normally, I stand in front of crowds quite often and not very nervous, but tonight, I'm just a little bit on edge. I... Little did I know, when I left my office on March the 16th, that it would be the last time I would be there until now. We, I had to go down and pick up a couple of files, but other than that, I have not been there. And since that time, the Wichita Children's Theater and Dance Center has lost 25 performances, two dance recitals, the River Festival, our spring tour, and all of our classes, our summer classes, in studios for theater and dance. That makes up almost 50% of our annual budget. And I know everyone is in the same situation that we are, but I just thought that I would let you know that little fact before I start. We have been able to have our Zoom dance, dance classes and theater classes we started this week, which have been marvelous. I don't know what we would have done... I didn't even know what Zoom was when I left my office in March the 16th, but it has been wonderful, and I know you all have been having meetings that way also. And that brings me to the reason that I'm here tonight. I have 11 girls, four of which are seniors, that have been preparing for this, for the dance recital that did not happen all semester. And through the Zoom process, they have learned the dances, but only last night were they together for the very first time to see that choreography in one room. Self-distancing, wearing masks, very difficult. I took their temperatures. We did all the, all the things that we needed to do to keep them safe. And I, I told them a couple, a month or so ago that I would try very, very hard to find some place for them to perform these dances that they have been learning. And a few months ago, I came and met with Katie Cork about some performances that hopefully we're going to do in the, in your lovely amphitheater in the fall. And so that was my first thought. I thought, okay, we could do this outdoors and be safe. And so I called Katie and talked to her about it, and we were able to reach, finally reach a date after looking at many, many schedules, and that date is June the 26th. And so those 11 girls and their teachers and hopefully their parents and grandparents being able to hopefully perform in that lovely space. I am coming to you tonight as a 501(c)(3) organization and asking if it would be possible for you to waive the fee for that evening. It would mean a great, great deal to us, and I appreciate you very much. I live right at 143rd. I'm in the neighborhood and have been for 45 years, I think. And my first experience out here to see the amphitheater and to see the library was when I met with Katie a few months ago, and I'm very proud to be in this neighborhood. Thank you very much for your time, and if, do you have any questions that you'd like to ask of me before I go?
Counsel. Any questions?
Thank you so much for your consideration. We appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am. So what we've got before us is to approve or disapprove of Wichita Children's Theater and Dance Center request to waive the fees for use of Capitol Federal Amphitheater on 26th, 5:00 p.m. to midnight at council's discretion. Any discussion on that?
Mr. Mayor, if you, if I may, I do want to just address real quickly that my wife does teach at the Wichita Children's Theater and Dance Center. That will not impede my vote or anything, but I did want to make that public, so.
Appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to approve the Wichita Children's Theater and Dance Center request to fee, to waive the fee for the use of Capitol Federal Amphitheater on June 26th from 5:00 p.m. to midnight at council's discretion.
Second. Tim, was that you?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, counsel. This is why I'm proud of our counsel, things like this, so I appreciate it. You're welcome, ma'am. I look forward to, I look forward to seeing it.
So I... May I ask a question?
Yeah.
So since this is a, an active event now at our amphitheater and not a lot's going on lately, is there anything that we can do as a city, not necessarily investing money per se, to advertise this to our residents, whether it be Facebook, which would be simple, or in utility bill or anything?
I would actually say we don't need to. We're getting a lot... I think I put in the memo or Katie put in there, it, we're getting a lot of requests for exactly what she's talking about. A lot of private dance studios are looking for a place where they can put on these recitals that they've been working at. We've had our first ever wedding last weekend or the weekend prior, and that was when it was still limited to 15, so they were in groups of 15 out on the lawn and in the parking lot. So yes, we can, and, and yes, we will continue to outreach, but we have actually gotten an incredible increase in reservations, a strange outfall of this whole situation.
Wonderful to hear. I was actually just asking about this specific event, if we can advertise, but I like what you said there, so...
Um, yeah, let me reach out. It seems, since this is like these high school kids' recital, I don't know, Homer, do you know, are they good with like just opening up the gates and having a lot of people attend, or is this more of a family type deal, or I can check.
Monica, if you're still in the parking lot.
She, she left.
I just told her that we would all be there. Okay. And she didn't, she, she was crying, so she was very, very moved that you guys approved that. Yeah.
She wants us all...
No, they're used to performing and they, they love to get, I mean, they've worked on these dances for, you know, similar to basketball, you work on it all season, and they want to perform it somewhere, whether it's, you know, assisted living homes and stuff like that, or the amphitheater. And I think it's just a great marketing for us and amphitheater as well to help out with the community and, you know, the more kids that know about the...
I like Andover to show up, is what I'm trying to say, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I agree.
Troy, our, my daughter's dance, place that she's at, Kelsey's Dance Studio, is their, they've already reserved the amphitheater as well for their...
Nice.
...postponed recital that was supposed to be in, been in May, so I think, I think we'll get a lot of those extra.
I do have a question for staff. How much does this cost the city to let them use the amphitheater?
So my only concern is that we do have people paying the rates you see that have made their reservations. And so, does it cost us anything? It's lost revenue. So this is a lost revenue of $875. In a normal year, we wouldn't have gotten this, I don't believe, so depends how you view lost revenue, but then the question does come if, how many people are watching your meeting right now?
Right. And then like operational, you know, electric, will they, do they require anything special, lighting?
Um, I believe, I don't know if they're using video boards or not. The AV, we can turn on ahead of time, but there will be some cleanup the next day. We bring a parks employee in every Saturday to check on all the rentals because we typically run those out all summer long, and there is cleaning, especially now, that's necessary in between running. So I don't know that that's an additional person. They'll include that in their duties when they come out.
And we've had a couple of dance studios in the last couple of years that we've, you know, brought in and done a couple of shows for the public, too. And also remember that I think we've lost a couple of movies that we're going to be doing as well, so, I mean, maybe some of that balances out.
I talked to, when I started running last year, it seemed like a minute ago, that's one thing I talked to Brett White and Kim, I'm sorry, President, cruel about is, is having more stuff like that, and if it costs us a little bit of money to, 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 I don't want to say it, to show everyone what our children can do and the children in the area can do, I think it's money well spent, but this is my opinion.
Arts and entertainment.
I'm pretty excited about it, so... And if I can, if it's not any trouble for me to do it, I put, I'll put, because I talked about this, too, and it's just a short minute for me, if you don't mind, you know, how do we get people like me to know about it? You know, because a lot of times I didn't know stuff was happening. Of course, I was third shift, but I didn't know stuff was happening till the noise started, you know, so if we can promote our children, man, that's an opportunity that no money can, no money can pay for, you know what I mean? So, all right, I'll stop.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I lost track of where I was at.
Consent agenda.
Thank you, President. Consent agenda. We are now at a consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I motion to approve the consent agenda eight, eight point one through eight point seven.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. Fireworks display. Each year, Terradyne hosts a fireworks display on the 4th of July. This year, the show is requested to be on Saturday, July 4th. I believe the fire department has signed off on this already. Chief Russell, is that correct? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
Mr. Mayor...
Mr. Mayor, I think we have someone here to talk about.
Oh, I'm the representative from Stellar Fireworks.
Okay.
So I'm available for any questions. Should you have any?
Will it be a stellar show? I'm so sorry. Dad joke guy here, that's, that's what happens.
What kind of car do you drive?
I'm not telling you.
That was awesome. Yes, we're going to blow it up for the folks over at Terradyne and anyone else who cares to look in that direction on July 4th.
Where's Stellar based out of?
We're Wichita company. We've been producing the Terradyne show for 15 years.
One five, 15?
Uh, yes, sir.
Yes. So you've done it here before then, right?
Uh, many times.
Huh?
Yes.
So you're the one that's been keeping me awake all these years when I'm... Chief?
There's a lot of folks who don't do the permit. Okay, that's not us.
All right.
He's always had a permit, so he's all right.
Any more questions?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. I'd move to accept the, the approved application for a fireworks display at Terradyne Country Club by Stellar Fireworks, Wichita, for Saturday, July 4th.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Motion carries six zero.
Thank you.
The mayor don't get a vote. Lucky man. I love fireworks shows, I do. I'm just messing with you. Andover State's preliminary planned unit development zoning script Z 2020-03. What am I supposed to do now?
Probably Les is going to go over it. Yeah, that'd be what I would...
Les, are you going to speak to us about this? It ain't in my little cheat sheet here, so... Yes, I do. Thank you very much for pointing it out on live TV. At the May meeting of the Planning Commission, they held the required public hearing to change the zoning district and establish this Andover State's planned unit development after a recommendation from the subdivision committee. As you can see, it's a mixed-use plan that allows retail and service businesses, office businesses, and also offers up the potential to have residential, potentially above the retail and service businesses. There was a lot of talk about what kind of businesses would be here, what kind of restaurants, and at this time, the developer doesn't have a particular client, but he's, he's trying to posture himself to redevelop that property. There was a lot of discussion about traffic for this particular redevelopment project because it sits on Andover Road in an area where the average daily traffic counts are up near 20,000 cars a day. And ultimately, the, the Planning Commission approved the notion that as the parcels are replatted for individual users, a traffic study would be submitted so that we know what to plan around as far as access controls and access points. Ultimately, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the planned unit development plan.
Mr. Mayor, Les, this was purchased by a new company a year ago, is that right? Or maybe a little...
It's been a few years ago, yes.
Okay. So I guess my initial thought is, I mean, they own the land, and obviously, I've made my decisions based on, on that kind of thing, but I will say that in my heart, the Andover State's is a trailer park, and I grew up in a trailer park, and I know several others that have, and it's one of the, I would say, probably, just making an assumption, I guess, as was I when I grew up, a little lower end as far as income scale, and so they obviously are right there at the schools, and should I not be talking like this? JT, are you okay with... Okay, so it, it brings pause. Whenever I see, I guess, I don't know if gentrification is the right word for this, but when I, it brings pause to me whenever I see a area in our community that is currently served very well with the school system and in us, especially when it's a, you know, lower income, like I, again, it's an assumption of mine, I guess, but, I mean, I hate it, to be honest with you. I'll do what's correct when I vote on this, but I really do not like seeing areas that are doing just fine, that are low income, and there's not a lot of them in Andover already, people be displaced. I wonder if the, if they're looking at perhaps moving the people that are within that area of the estates and other places within the estates, so they stay here or what?
So a lot of the side eyes is that we have some processes we need to kind of get through before we get to this part of the conversation, because applicant actually also can present, and I believe they may be here tonight. So I hate to like pause you, but can we go back up, Mr. Mayor, to the disqualification and quorum-determined portion so that we just get all the legal process done correctly on the zoning change, and then we will pick up... And then we will pick up that conversation at the point that we return it to the bench, if that's all right, Council President?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
I'm a little emotional tonight, anyway, so I'm like, this is just another thing, this is kinda-
Okay, real quick, disqualification, 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 right?
Yes, sir.
Before we proceed with the hearing, I ask the city council, any of them intend to disqualify themselves from participating in this case because they have conflict of interest?
No.
No.
No. No.
Mr. Mayor, I do live very close to this area. Um, I do not disqualify myself from it, but I do live very close to this area and I have my own feelings about it.
I will, I will now ask the city council, any of them have seen any ex parte verbal or written communication prior to this hearing?
Thank you, turn your mic on.
No.
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 Negative.
No.
Has a city clerk received any protest petitions on this case?
No, we have not.
I now, I now ask the council members if they have all received copies of the draft minutes of Planning Commission for May nineteenth, twenty twenty, which summarizes the hearings on the case.
Yes.
Yes.
And I'm a little bit late to the party on this one. I know, I now call on Les, City Zone Administrator Les Mangus, to provide us with the case report. Are there any questions on the zoning administrator from council?
Well, I guess the only question I had wasn't, it was maybe personal, but again, it was the question of, did they ever discuss, um, anyone that's being displaced as to what would happen? If they're just kicked out and they have to leave Andover, or find another spot, or if they're gonna be able to stay within the estates and another lot that's open? Was that ever even a thing that was discussed?
Over the course of the last couple of years, I've had a lot of interactions with the new owners of the park. They own several mobile home parks around the southwestern part of the United States. They're ambitious businessmen. They have made it a point to try to fill the park up again, as, as you may have observed that, uh, there were a lot of vacancies when they bought it. They've made a conscious effort to, uh, place new homes, used homes, move homes within the park to try to get it full. And they've mentioned that it's their intention to move these houses that are in conflict with the change in zoning and the redevelopment as they, the parcels are taken down for redevelopment, rather than clear the strip and hope for new development.
Troy, um, I have a, well, I guess it's not really, maybe a comment. The, uh, the previous owners had the same idea as well.
Mm-hmm.
Um, they, they just never moved on it.
Yeah.
Um, and they sold it, and obviously, the new owners have that same idea. Uh, but it, it's been an idea as long as I've known those people as well, the previous owners, uh, they just never moved on it.
Yeah, I know, I was at the Planning Commission meetings and had the same conversation directly with them then.
Right.
Maybe I felt, made them feel bad enough that they didn't move on it, I don't know.
Yeah. But, you know, they were also pretty picky on who they had in there, which is why they didn't have as much of a full lot. Um, so, I'm not saying that the new ones are or not, but, um, I just know that they were maybe a little, little more pickier, so.
Being from that area, I will tell you that that park is very well taken care of now. They've done a lot of work to it, replaced a lot of mobile homes, all that. Les, I've voiced my concern via email to you about the whole Madison Avenue. That would be my only concern because Rhonda Avenue is currently busy as it is, and it's very dangerous for the kids to be walking up and down. If we take out that access to Madison Road, that Madison Avenue Road, um, it's, it's not gonna work.
Okay, I'm so sorry, but this again sounds a lot like bench deliberations, and we still need the applicant to give their presentation, and I believe you're going to take public comment for new information. And then, we can have a really rich conversation at the bench, if you don't mind. And I'm sorry, we have three of these, so we're gonna be super well-practicing it by the end of this.
I think we've done half of it already.
Yeah, it's like, I think everyone knows how I feel, so I'm, I'm good.
Thanks, Jenny.
So, we're at the, have we any written communications, correct?
No, sir, you did not.
Does applicant wish to present any new information?
Good evening, all. I'm Jason Gish with NKEC, representing the applicant here. Maybe I'll hold some, I heard a little bit about what you said. I just, uh, to reiterate, um, uh, Les's comments, uh, there, the, the Planning Commission did approve a very wide-ranging, um, use for the property, so it could still function as its current zoning use, and I think Mr. Butchers may even fill in more homes there, um, if he's able to, um, in the current, in the current area. But, um, he was just trying to create some opportunity, if it arose to, um, kind of, kind of based on the current zoning along Andover Road, to reflect, um, some of those opportunities within that parcel that he owns, um, in order to, you know, just like I said, provide other opportunities should they, should they arise or someone be interested. And then, of course, we'd have to come back and create a final plat, do the traffic study, um, perform those things to make sure they would really, you know, function as, as needed. It stands for questions.
Would there be any interference with the, our new sidewalk that's going through there? That would be either for Les or for you?
There are some, uh, right-of-way dedications that will be required when it comes time to plat. And there may be some driveway approaches that'll be installed that will remove a segment of sidewalk and, and replace it with a, a driveway approach.
Yeah, and that'll all be on the owner?
Yes.
Okay.
Isn't there, isn't there a monument along in there, too? And what will happen to that?
I don't know that, that owners discussed that per se, but I, I do know we approached them about doing something next year for the forty year and, um, the anniversary, and they were very open to that, so I would suspect they would be open to doing something with that memorial and, and memory of those tornado victims.
Any more-
Thirty, not forty. I turn forty Saturday, it's on my brain, I'm a little preoccupied.
Any more questions? Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
I, too, lived in that, that particular trailer park for many years, so I'm kinda partial to it as well. Would we, we would like to welcome anyone interested in this agenda item and lay out a few ground rules. Please come to the podium and give your name, address. Comments from the individual members of the public will be limited to three minutes. The governing body has been provided the draft minutes and the video of the public hearing and has been available, so please limit your comments to information not previously shared at the public hearing held on May nineteenth. Does anyone from the public have any new information? All right. Applicant's response. Does any, does the applicant have any further responses to the public comments, which we didn't have any? So, we'll keep rolling, right? Assuming the council has received all the information they needed on this case, you have received an outline of the choices provided under the statutes of Council Action KSA twelve dash seven fifty-seven C. How do you wish to act?
I guess I have a question, uh, Mr. Mayor, if you may, or if I may.
Yeah.
So, when, when we're talking about displacing Les, am I correct in assuming that I could count on the right side of that, or the left side of the red, about seven homes, then, that would be displaced roughly? I believe one of them's a maintenance shed, if I'm maybe not correct, as far as the, it's hard to tell from the roof, I don't know.
One of them's a office.
I think there's about fourteen, actually, last time I counted, yeah.
One of them is caretaker, that may be who you're talking about.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, one of my, my, my old man buddy that mows the yard.
Yes.
Very good man.
Thank you, that was my only question.
I count thirteen on the, um, actual preliminary pud, which is a little bit easier to count in the packet, um, because it calls them out by address.
I can't count, sorry. I didn't take my shoes off, I'm sorry.
How do you wish to act, council?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion. Ready for motion, right?
Yes, sir.
I move to adopt the Planning Commission's findings of fact and recommendation for approval for zoning case Z twenty twenty dash oh three and approve, and approve an ordinance establishing the Andover State's Preliminary Planning Unit Development District and Plan. Mr. Mayor, I do have a question before we vote. What is the next step of this process, Les, if we do approve to do this ordinance?
The next step would be for the subdivision committee and the Planning Commission to, uh, to, uh, look at a final PUD plan, a final plat of whatever area of development the developer chooses. He's told us that he, he fully intends for this to be taken down in, in a few phases, not all at once. And like I explained to you in, in an email-
Yeah.
-at that time, we'll, we'll ask for a traffic report and we'll have final recommendations on access controls. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries six zero. I'll just tell you a little story about the maintenance man there. Uh, it's kinda interesting, 'cause he actually survived the tornado. He was living in a mobile home down on, I believe, Fourth Street, and, uh, he survived it, and they built a house across the street, on the same side of the street that Tim lives on, and they lived there a number of years, and I was very good friends with him because I lived across the street at Fourth, and I can't even think of the name of that road. It's terrible, isn't it? So, uh, me and him were very, very good friends, and, uh, he lost his wife and, and, uh, just, uh, very hard for him to recover, and he had to, he left the house 'cause he just couldn't live there no more. So, uh, to say I had, am emotionally invested in his well-being and where he gets located is, um, understatement, so if that makes any of y'all have any peace in your hearts about that. If it doesn't, that's cool, too. Ten two, three twelve Mike Street, Z twenty twenty dash four. And checklist. I now call the, uh, agenda ten two, zoning case number Z twenty twenty oh four. Before we proceed with the hearing, I'd like to ask council if any of them intend to disqualify themselves from participating in this case because they have conflict of interest.
No.
No.
Nope. I will now ask council if they have received any ex parte verbal or written communication prior to this agenda item, which they would like to share.
No.
No. No.
Has the city clerk received any protest petitions on this case?
No, sir, we have not.
I now ask city council members if they have received a copy of the draft minutes and Planning Commission for May nineteenth, twenty twenty, which summarizes the hearing of the case.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. I now call on City Zoning Administrator Les Mangus to provide us with the report on this case. Mr. Mayor and council, this application and the next case that's on your agenda are an effort by an applicant to assemble some parcels to, uh, redevelop an area up in the North Main Street and Mike Street area. He's actually assembled from three different owners, parcels that would allow access to two different streets for a plus or minus nine-acre, uh, proposed multifamily subdivision. The Planning Commission heard this, uh, this case at its May meeting, uh, deliberated the, the comprehensive plan and, and the, uh, effect on the neighborhood and the redevelopment that's going on in this neighborhood, and ultimately, uh, recommended approval.
Are there any questions for zoning administrator from the council member?
So, I guess I have historic questions. So, as I recall, when the developer developed the rest of them, there was quite a bit of pushback from the residents along the road. We didn't hear a word from any of them?
Interestingly, we, we had one comment from one neighbor, um, was a phone call or an email, and he didn't speak at the, at the public hearing, didn't show at the public hearings, so.
Wow, they were concerned about traffic, 'cause there was obviously quite a few less people living there on that street before they developed, but we haven't had any complaints about it?
No.
Good, that's wonderful.
Isn't this part and parcel his concern for helping with alleviate some traffic, too? Yes, yes. You'll notice that, that this parcel is, uh, on the extension of May Street, and in order to get a, a straight right-of-way to connect into the, the subject of the next zoning case, he acquired this property and intends to develop this property in the same manner as those houses that he has just built on May Street.
And this is a trend that this area's going a lot of multifamily, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
And the access to this will be off of May Street, then? Or both streets? Both Mike and May?
Only May Street. You'll notice the flag shape of this parcel?
Yeah.
That flag that extends down to Mike Street is only twenty feet wide. So, the access would be to May Street, and then when we get to the next agenda item, you'll see that the applicant has acquired another lot that connects back over to, uh, Main Street in order to allow a loop street system.
And forgive my knowledge, but do specials or anything take into effect when we're doing this as far as maybe roads that aren't there, or anything like that?
Absolutely, absolutely. I've, I've talked with the developer and his engineer about this, and they intend to build a public street system and public water lines and public sewer lines to serve their redevelopment.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have something to do with the runoff water? I mean, is it gonna, how's that gonna affect us? Sure, sure. The redevelopment will be held to the same standards as any other new development, pre and post condition. Just out of curiosity, does anybody know what they rent for or sell for, or what are they, are they, do they, are they for sale, or I don't even know? As far as I know, the product that he owns there on May Street is for rent. Uh, they're just now finishing those new buildings. I don't know what the rent range is. Just curious. Any more questions for Les? Have there been any rent, I'm sorry?
That was my chair.
They're squeaking tonight, ain't they?
They are, yeah. Have any written communication been received?
No. Our office is not. That's a new question in there.
Does the applicant wish to present any new information? We would like to welcome everyone interested in this agenda item and lay out a few ground rules. Please come to the podium, give your name, address. Comments from individual members of the public will be limited to three minutes. The governing body has been provided the draft minutes and a video of the public hearing has been made available, so please limit your comments to information not previously shared in the public hearing held on May nineteenth, twenty twenty. Does anyone from the public have any information?
TV doesn't know. Does the applicant have any further response? No. Assuming the, the council has received all the information they needed on this case, do you have? Wow. Assuming the council has received all the information they need on this case, you have received the outline of the choices provided under the state statutes for council action KSA twelve dash seven fifty-seven C. How do you wish to act, counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd move to adopt an ordinance to accept the planning commission's findings of fact and recommendations for approval for zoning case Z dash twenty twenty oh four and approve an ordinance changing the zoning district classification from the SF two, single-family residential medium density district to the MF two, attached, single-family residential district as presented.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries six zero.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a, just a quick comment?
Yes, sir.
Um, Les, can you ask, did, did he come to any of the zoning meetings, the applicant, Mr. Evans?
The agent for the applicant was there, Paul Gray.
Okay, all right. I would just like to, you know, just kindly request that they show up, at least set in the audience, even if they aren't going to present anything new. It's just, it's just a courteous thing.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. I now call agenda item ten three, zoning case number Z twenty twenty dash five. Before we proceed with the hearing, I'll ask counsel if they have, if any of them have intended to disqualify themselves for participating in this case because of conflict of interest.
No.
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 I will now ask the counsel if any of them have received any ex parte verbal or written communication prior to this agenda item which they would like to share.
No.
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 Has the city clerk received any protest petitions on this case?
No, sir, our office has not.
I now ask city council members if they have all received copies of the draft minutes of the planning commission for May nineteen, twenty twenty, which summarizes the hearing of the case.
Yes.
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 I now call on the city zoning administrator, Les E. Mangus, to provide us with a report on this case.
As I explained before, this is, this is the larger of the assemblage of parcels that this applicant has put together. You'll notice it's adjacent to the north of that parcel at three twelve Mike Street. And there's also a lot that extends over to connect to Main Street. That's a, currently, the, the large parcel of three twenty-seven there has one single-family dwelling in the, in the center of the property. This, this redevelopment is a good infill for the property. I've known the owner of this property for some twenty-five or thirty years and it's just always been his hopes of someday to redevelop this, this parcel.
Cool. Are there any questions for Les? Mr. Mangus, I'm sorry.
Uh, the, I noticed that the driveway to the, the lot three twenty-seven came from the north. Is that, was that a right of way, a private agreement or something to access that? And will that right of way be vacated?
It's a private agreement.
Private.
There, there actually isn't even a street right of way at West Turnpike Road. It's a private easement between the Kansas Turnpike and those adjacent properties.
So, so the road off thirteenth that goes back about four or five houses, is that our road? Is that a city road or is that?
It's actually not a public street.
So, I shouldn't have been driving up and down until today? All right. Good to know. All right. Any other questions for Les? Have any written communication been received?
No, sir.
No.
Does the applicant wish to present any new information? We would like to welcome anyone interested in this agenda item and lay out a few ground rules. Please come to the podium and give your name, address. Comments from individual members of the public will be limited to three minutes. The governing body has been presented the draft minutes and the video of the public hearing has been made available, so please limit your comments to information not previously shared at the public hearing held on May nineteenth, twenty twenty. Does anyone from the public have any new information? Does the applicant have any further response to public comments? Nope. Assuming the council has received all the information they need on this case. I'm gonna start over. Assuming the council has received, received all the information they need on this case, you have received an outline of the choices provided under the state statute for council action KSA twelve dash seven fifty-seven C. How do you wish to act?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to, or move to adopt the planning commission's findings of fact and recommendation for approval for zoning case Z twenty twenty dash zero five and approve an ordinance changing the zoning district classification from the SF dash one, single-family residential low-density district to the MF dash two, attached, single-family residential district.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, I have a quick question for Mr. Mangus. What exactly, I guess, does that mean? We're changing it from a low-density district, so the one house to a attached, single-family residential district. So, a housing development? Is that what we're, or an apartment complex?
This zoning classification doesn't allow apartments. It allows duplexes and attached, single-family and townhouses.
So, very similar to what's already been created?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries six zero. Eleven point one, temporary drainage and utility easement PDF. Let's go and introduce this item.
Eleven one.
You skipped the water and sewer bids?
Did I skip one? Yes.
You did.
Water and sewer bids for the Cornerstone ninth edition.
I'm sorry, I thought that we were going to take the bids after you do the utility easement and the permanent utility easement. I don't know that it matters. Does it matter which order we do?
Makes no difference.
Okay.
It's just our order's different than your order.
I think you can just go ahead and proceed if you want with the temporary drainage and utility easement. We can go with that.
Go for it.
Just go for it.
Just talk louder.
We can follow along to your order, Mr. Mayor.
Do it.
I signed up for this abuse, didn't I?
Yes.
Okay, Les will introduce. Now, I'm so confused.
Eleven point two.
Yeah, you were fine.
Eleven point two. The design of the Cornerstone ninth edition water and sewer projects has both sanitary sewer and water pipes that would extend beyond the property lines of the, of the platted ninth edition into what would be future subdivisions. So, the Chestnut Ridge LLC has dedicated temporary drainage and utility easements to allow that work to be done on unplatted property and temporary easements that would ultimately be replatted in the future as permanent easements with new subdivisions.
Anyone having questions?
Mr. Mayor, I move to accept a separate instrument dedication of a temporary drainage and utility easement from Chestnut Ridge LLC.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries six zero. So, now I need to back up to eleven one, is that correct?
Or three, and then go back to one.
All right.
We can go to twelve seven if you want and go back.
This is your meeting, Mr. Mayor.
We can all go to twenty.
Looks of twenty.
Seventeen point one, but.
Okay, let's, let's.
I'm sorry.
I was just starting to like you, too. Good, let's do eleven one, please. Temporary drainage and utility easement.
It's the water and sewer project bids, actually.
Yes.
I think we wanted to do the utility easement with USD three eighty-five.
Sure, that's eleven three.
Eleven three. So, are we past eleven one or am I confused or what?
Those are out of order on your piece of paper. That's the problem for you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so.
Well, wait. All right, for that. I'm so confused right now. Okay, eleven three, water and sewer project bids. PFD, Les will introduce this item. Please.
This morning, we accepted bids for the water and sewer projects for the Cornerstone ninth edition. We had three bids. Noah construction was the low bidder in the amount of two hundred and twenty-seven thousand five hundred and ninety-eight dollars. The engineer for the project has reviewed those bids and compared those to the petitions for the improvements and we recommend you accept that low bid.
Mr. Mayor, I move to accept the lowest qualified bid for Noah construction in the amount of two hundred and twenty-seven thousand five hundred and ninety-eight dollars and reject all other bids, including bidders not in compliance with resolution fourteen dash zero six, and authorize the mayor to sign the contract for the Cornerstone ninth edition water and sewer improvements.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries six zero.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So, this was worded a little interestingly to say, to reject all other bids, which I don't recall doing that before. Maybe we have, I don't know. And, and also including bidders not in compliance with. So, obviously, there were challenges then with this, yeah? People are looking at me all crazy. I maybe shouldn't have asked the question, I don't know, but.
Particular instance, the city attorney has recommended we use that, that language because we do have a resolution about the qualification of bids.
Okay. I recall not too long ago, we had a semi-similar challenge with a fire truck where we were having, that question came up of, did they meet the actual requirements or not? And that was with that. But what I just heard is from now on, we're gonna go ahead and, and include this type of language in all of these to make sure we cover what needs to be covered, is that right?
Yeah, it's in your next item as well, so you'll see that same verbiage when we talk about the paving project for heritage bids.
Was there any questioning on the, the amount this lowest qualified bid was lower than everyone else's plus the engineer's estimate?
That's a good question, Mike. We had three bids there. One was about ten percent over the engineer's estimate. One was right at the engineer's estimate and the lowest bidder was nearly twenty-five percent below.
Yeah.
Noah construction has been doing water and sewer work in Andover for at least the thirty years that I've been here and we have full confidence in their work.
I've totally heard of them. It's just sometimes, you know, someone misses something and obviously, it's on them now, but, you know, in my opinion, that wouldn't make them a qualified bidder if they missed something.
Sure. One, one of the jobs the project engineer has is to review these bids and they always extend all of the, all of the calculations out to make sure there isn't a mathematical error that might result in a, in a bid that is short.
Yep. Okay.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion?
We already approved it.
Man, where am I at?
Sorry.
Now, you're on eleven three.
I'm so confused. Eleven three, Mr. Mayor.
Computer, eleven three. Yeah, different.
Utility easement.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, we did.
We voted second and voted and then after we voted, I, I asked the question.
So, it's all your fault.
Unless I imagined the whole thing, but I'm pretty sure.
We voted.
We voted.
Did you not put on there who the first and second were?
I had the first and second just not.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Utility easement PDF. Les will introduce this item.
You might remember that this ninth edition lays adjacent to the future Andover USD three eighty-five school site. And as a part of that development, there are extensions of water and sewer for a potential school site in the future. These easements just establish an easement for that stub of a utility to be placed and maintained until such time as the, the school were to plat and want to connect to those utilities.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the separate instrument dedication, dedication of the utility easement from USD three eighty-five to accommodate the Cornerstone ninth edition water and sewer project.
Second.
Second.
Troy.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries six zero. Are, are we okay on the last one? As far as votes? Seen you all discuss, no?
Do you feel like we didn't vote in the previous? Oh, okay.
Okay. Long as you're happy, everybody happy? All right. Heritage. Heritage first. Man, what am I doing there? Heritage twelve first, twelve one revised petition and resolution of advisory PDF. Recommended action, accept the revised paving petition phase one A and approve the amending resolution of advisability related to the Heritage first edition. Lance will introduce this item.
Mr. Mayor, counsel, the owner developer of the Heritage first edition, as you see on the screens in front of you, this have submitted a revised petition for a portion of the paving improvements that were, that are required. You guys will remember, this is the first, first phase of the residential development as part of the Heritage Tax Increment Finance District. They have submitted a revised paving petition, increased the cost of, or the, the petition amount, submitted a revised letter of credit in conformance with our, our, with city policy. That's the first action you have is to consider the acceptance of that revised petition. The second is the required resolution of advisability. I'll answer any questions about the petition or the, the resolution if you have any.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move that we accept the revised paving petition phase one A and approve the amending resolution of advisability related to the Heritage first edition as presented.
Second.
Mike?
All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries six zero. All right.
Can I just move on down this? Yeah. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to approve an amending ordinance authorizing the construction of certain internal improvements related to the Heritage first edition as presented.
Homer, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries six zero. Paving project bids, PDF. Les will introduce this item.
You remember back on May twelfth, we took the bids for this paving project for the Heritage first edition? The, there were sections of that bid that exceeded the petitions. So, now that we have adopted those amended petitions and made the necessary work ordinance, we would ask that you accept the bid from back on May twelfth of APAC Kansas in the amount of eight hundred and seventeen thousand one hundred and fifty-six dollars and eighty-five cents.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move that we accept the bid from APAC Kansas, Inc. in the amount of eight hundred and seventeen thousand one hundred and fifty-six dollars and eighty-five cents, reject all other bids, and authorize the mayor, Mr. Ronnie Price, to reject, to sign contracts upon approval by the city attorney.
Second. Homer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All opposed? Motion carries six zero. Andover USD three eighty-five Andover High School, High and Middle School Edition. Les will introduce this item. Final plat.
As a part of the redevelopment of the Andover High School and Middle School site, we required that the property be platted. It was never platted in the past, and as you can see from that exhibit, there are many, many easements, pipelines, setbacks that have been clarified over the course of the last year. The engineer has had his hands full with all of the encumbrances that were on this property in clearing those up, and he has, he's finally reached the finish line here, and you have a final plat that was recommended and approved by the Planning Commission for your acceptance of the dedications.
Mr. Mayor, I move to accept the dedication for the USD three eighty-five Andover High and Middle School Edition as approved by the Planning Commission.
Homer, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries six zero. Petition developers agreement and resolution of advisability.
Mr. Mayor, counsel. As part of that plating process, there was a traffic study completed in addition to a city-conducted traffic study previously to the plating of this property. As part of that, some paving improvements, some improvements specifically to Andover Road, were required through this process. The petition that has been submitted by USD three eighty-five is for those identified improvements to Andover Road. In that petition, it is a fifty percent benefit district, the school district, and fifty percent city at large. Les has also been working very diligently to receive outside funding, federal and state funding to participate in this project as well. A large portion of the actual cost of improvements will be paid through federal and state funds. The remaining local responsibility will be fifty percent school district, fifty percent city at large. This petition reflects those amounts. We typically, our finance, or our city policy allows for you to waive the requirement for a financial guarantee for other government entities. That has been the norm for the rest of the school district projects up to this point. They have not submitted a financial guarantee for this, just as for you to know. So the petition is first for you to consider the developers' agreement. The required developers' agreement is the second item that's part of this, and then the resolution of advisability as well. I can answer any questions about any of those three that you may have.
So what happens if the school district decides they don't want to pay it?
They have a petition, or they, once you guys accept the petition, we complete the improvement and assess the cost to them.
Okay.
We double emo.
Is that what happens?
Every sixty days.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor? I'd move that we accept the paving petition, approve the developers' agreement, and approve the resolution of advisability related to the USD three eighty-five Andover High and Middle School Editions as presented.
Homer, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries six zero.
Case anyone's wondering, I was joking about the double. I mean, watching and actually thought.
I was trying to lay it down.
Okay.
That's on record right now, Trey.
On record as not being funny.
Record. There you go.
Thirteen three, work ordinance, ordinance. Lance will introduce this item.
Just go ahead. Alright, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, if that's okay?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. I move to approve an ordinance authorizing the construction of certain internal improvements related to the USD three eighty-five Andover High and Middle School Editions as presented.
Homer, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries six zero.
What's the timeline on this, do we know?
Les, I think you could probably answer that question a little bit more definitively.
The road project is in the federal funding queue for 2022. It's in design as we speak.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to say something to, oh, I'm sorry, were you on?
No.
Okay.
I'm perfect, thank you.
I know that you brought it up with Les, but Les spent a pretty tremendous amount of time working on this for years, really. Maybe it's not been years, but a long time. And the numbers are, he, through all of his efforts, put, got the federal government or whomever to put in WAMPO, two point four million dollars. And then that allowed us to really put in four hundred and eighty thousand dollars, and the same with the school district. So that is a, the efforts or the, all of his hard work is what allowed this to happen and probably allowed us to even do this project. That's tremendous amount of work, and Les is always working with WAMPO on projects for the city, and it's just, I don't know if he gets enough credit for it. I think he probably does internally, but I definitely think that Les is amazing at what he does, and this is the fruits of his, of his efforts. And we thank you.
Thanks, sir.
I thank you, yeah.
You can't, you can't ever retire.
I know.
You'll be here till this finishes, right?
Better be.
We had that discussion already this afternoon, huh? Ain't going nowhere. Okay. Fourteen. USD three eighty-five Metal Arc Second Edition. Final plat. Les will introduce this item.
You may remember, as the Metal Arc site was purchased and being platted by the school district, there was a dispute with an adjoining landowner that ended up in court in a settlement over the eastern boundary of the parcel. This plat reflects the disputed territory and the split that was agreed upon with the adjacent owner. It's a replat of the majority of the property, but a plat of just that sliver to true up the boundaries, the zoning, and the plat of the school district's parcel.
Any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I move to accept the dedications for the USD three eighty-five Metal Arc Second Edition as approved by the Planning Commission.
Homer, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries six zero. Four point two, petition developers agreement and resolution of advisability.
Mr. Mayor, counsel. Petitions were originally accepted by the council when this property was originally platted, but since it's being replatted, thus changing the legal description, we must accept or consider the acceptance of new petitions. Three petitions for the required improvements for this plat have been submitted. One is for paving, for some improvements to Thirteenth Street, some driveway, the driveway access off of Thirteenth Street, and some sidewalk improvements. And then two waterline petitions. One waterline to be installed within, adjacent to Thirteenth Street that is going to be split fifty-fifty between the city and the school district. And then another waterline to serve the school buildings on site, which will be a hundred percent assessed to the school district. I'll back up, the paving petition is also one hundred percent assessed to the benefit district. The developers' agreement, the required developers' agreement is included in this item. Again, we will be waiving the requirement for the financial guarantee, and then the resolution of advisability is also there for your consideration.
Mr. Mayor, I move to accept revised petitions for paving, waterline A and waterline B, approve the developers' agreement, and approve a resolution of advisability related to USD three eighty-five Metal Arc Second Edition.
Homer, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries six zero. Four three, work ordinance.
We go ahead. Yeah, I think we just go ahead and. Mr. Mayor, I move to approve an ordinance authorizing the construction of certain internal improvements related to the USD three eighty-five Metal Arc Second Edition.
Homer, second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries six zero. One fifty-ninth Street KTA Bridge Replacement N dash oh six five five zero one. Waste excavation. Les will introduce this.
The one hundred fifty-ninth Street improvements are, again, Troy, one of those legacy projects. I've been working on this one since two thousand and eight.
Wow.
To get that bridge replaced.
I was born in two thousand, no, I'm kidding.
The first step of this project was to do some sewer interceptor work that involved a sewer line that started down near the Terrady and Office at Central Avenue and extends all the way up to serve the Metal Arc Edition that you just accepted the replat of. That sewer line was something like twenty-two to twenty-five feet deep. As it ran down along that over a mile course, ran into rock and subsurface water and extra wide trenches, and then was followed by a waterline relocation project to relocate all those public water lines that were in conflict with the, with the road project. All of these things have generated excess dirt because of their excessive depth and the rock that was encountered, so we have this five thousand yard pile of dirt on the site that needs to be disposed of. There's nowhere on the project that it can be wasted. So we have a change order request here from the contractor, Pearson Construction, to remove that dirt. What they're actually planning to do is waste it in a stockpile on the Kansas Turnpike at their Andover exit in anticipation of widening the Prairie Creek Bridge in the not-too-distant future where they will need some fill dirt.
Cool. Can we sell it to them for the same price that they're gonna charge us?
You might, you might remember that Kansas Turnpike Authority is our fifty-fifty partner in the local share of this project.
Completely kidding. Joking, everyone listening. Mr. Mayor? I move to accept a proposal from Pearson Construction to remove the waste excavation from the one hundred fifty-ninth Street KTA Bridge site and authorize the Kansas Department of Transportation to add the change order to the contract for the one hundred fifty-ninth Street KTA Bridge project N dash zero six five five dash zero one as presented.
Second. Mike? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries six zero. Five two, street lighting trenching. Les will introduce this item, please.
As with all of our arterial street improvement projects, we have a lighting program to install new streetlights with underground service conduits. That arrangement is with Evergi for the installation and the perpetual maintenance of the streetlights. However, Evergi requires the city to pay for the underground trenching to get service from pole to pole. This has to be done by a contractor who's approved by Evergi, and we've solicited proposals from Betson Trenching and Phillips Southern Electric. We would recommend you accept the lower of the proposals with Betson Trenching.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question. How many are, when you say Evergi-approved, how many contractors are out there that Evergi has approved to do this?
There are many.
Oh, okay.
Many, yes.
Hundreds?
I wouldn't say hundreds, maybe a dozen.
Okay. Thank you.
It's, in, in these instances, it's good for us to be a part of this process because it gives us some say in the schedule of this work, because it's to be done immediately following our project and coordinated with the work on our project.
Who puts in the pole bases? Who actually puts in the light pole?
This is an interesting relationship here, Tim. What, what happens is Betson will do the trenching that the city of Andover pays for, install the bases, and plum the wiring into the bases for Evergi, and set the light standards and connect the lights for Evergi.
So they do it all?
Yes.
Whomever we choose?
Yes.
Does it all?
So, so long as it's on the West Star approved list of contractors.
Nice. Mr. Mayor? I'd move that we accept the proposal from Betson Trenching to provide the trenching for the underground electric service for the one hundred fifty-ninth Street Central to KDA Street Lighting Project, and authorize the mayor to sign the contract.
Homer, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries six zero. Andover Road Bike and Pedestrian Path N dash zero six eight five dash zero one. Les will introduce this item.
It's the last one, I promise. With these road projects and bike pad projects, of course, there are always utility relocations that have to take place to clear the way for the construction. Oftentimes, with minor water relocations, Wichita Water Department will ask that we include the relocation of meters or fire hydrants, or maybe even water lines with the construction project, so that the Water Department has to go out, not go out and tear up the street, make the relocation, repair the street, maintain the surface, until the construction gets there to, to install the new facility, whether it be a street or a sidewalk. In this case, Wichita Water has asked us to include the relocation of the water meters required by this project in our construction project, and they will reimburse us for not only the construction costs, but the engineering costs that we've incurred in engineering their relocations. It's a pretty, pretty common agreement we have with Wichita Water.
Any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the agreement with the city of Wichita providing for the reimbursement of the expenses for the relocation of water meters for the Andover Road Bicycle Pedestrian Path Project.
Homer, second.
Go ahead.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries six zero. Seventeen, please. One hundred and one, best presentation. Chief Gold, emphasize.
Before he presents, may I say a word or two? So for those that are here in the audience and that might be listening, and, and people that, well, that care, I guess, one of the things that us as a council and mayor are required to do is to make sure that every penny, every tax, you know, penny that comes in is being used appropriately for, and this is where it gets a little difference of opinion. In my opinion, would be the residents of Andover require that, or request that we have certain quality of life, which certainly the Police Department and Fire Department and Parks Department, and everyone really focuses on meeting the needs of the, of the quality of life. We also have a pretty significant amount of people that are worried about overpaying taxes in various capacities. And so one of the things that we're required to, it's honestly, it's difficult, and it's time-consuming, but is for us as a council to understand the budgets, which is what Chief is gonna go over tonight, and what we've seen already with the Fire Department, and we'll see with other ones. So this is one of the most important things that we do to, one, make sure that the citizens understand that we're here to represent them, and to make sure that we're taking care of what they have provided to the city. I mean, we are citizen representatives, and while we do everything we can with the staff and the city, it's really our duty to represent the city, the city's citizens, as a liaison per se with the city staff. And so this is one of the most in-depth, time-consuming, frustrating, because it's a heck of a lot of numbers, and a lot of it's subjective things as to what should or should not happen within the city. But I want you to know that we've all taken it seriously, and we listen, and we read, and we have meeting after meeting, and we have these excellent presentations, which is what we're gonna see tonight. And I just hope that you, that are citizens of the city, understand that this is one of the main things that you hire us as council and mayor to do. And if you're listening, pay very close attention to Chief tonight, as well as with the rest of these presentations, because it is absolutely what, when your taxes come from your home, this is what it pays for. This is explaining what it pays for. And if you are concerned with it, we're here for you to come to us and say, hey, we did not appreciate our tax money being spent on this or that. That's what we're here for, so. That's what we're here for, so. Anyway, I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you for giving me the time.
Thanks, Mr. President.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
It's a, well, go ahead, Chief. Thank you, sir.
Well, first, let me say thank you, Troy, for setting that bar so high for me tonight before I get started. Mayor, council members, before you, I have a, our Police Department and E-911 proposed budget for 2021. This budget was put together by our command staff, who are present here in the room. Captain Joe Schroeder, Captain Buck Buchanan, our Communications Director Becky Tapia, they all played a role in putting this proposal together for you. The pressure is kind of on me tonight when the national headlines is calling for the defunding of police. I'm coming in front of you to talk about our funding for 2021. These are some very challenging times that we have. If you allow me, we have some fairly new council members here tonight, not so new anymore. I think they're getting broken in pretty fast. But if you would allow me, I'm going to talk a little bit about our department also, besides just the budget numbers. So, starting out with the preparation of our budget for 2021, our City Administrator, Ms. McCoslin, asked us, asked us on the Police Department to do two things. First, she asked us to divide the expenses from just the Police Department and, or separate them out, the Police Department and our 911 expenses. And she also asked us to cut 5% from our 2020 budget. Number one, first, we did separate our budgets into two columns. As you'll see some of the actual budget slides, you'll see that we've penciled them, or we put them in there in both police on one side and our 911 on another, so that we did that. And then the second part, the reduction of 5% from our 2020 budget, we worked hard, and this budget, our operational budget, which includes contractuals, commodities, capital improvements, we were able to cut by 8.1%, so far exceeded the 5% requested. So, to start out a little bit about our department, I wanted to give you a breakdown. We have, the department is currently staffed with 26 sworn officers. That includes me as one of the sworn officers and eight and a half, or 8.5 civilian individuals. Our department is broken down into four sections, basically. We have the administrative staff, that is myself and our administrative assistant, a civilian staff member. We have special services, which is led by Captain Joe Schroeder, and inside the special services, it includes our accreditation manager and four school resource officers. This section of the department is also tasked with responsibility for handling all city specialty events and functions, as well as our pre-employment and recruitment process. Our operations section, which is headed or led by Captain Buck Buchanan, is really the backbone of our Police Department. It's what everyone expects of our Police Department. It is our patrol and investigation section. This section is comprised of five lieutenants, one in investigations and four in patrol, and along with 12 officers. And I left out, but also two detectives. And finally, our communications section, our 911 center, which is led by our Communication Director Becky Day, and in the section is comprised of a records and evidence custodian and 4.5, currently 4.5 communications officers or dispatchers. In our 2019, I'm sorry, 2021 budget proposal, I'm going to go back first in 19. In 2019, the City Council approved the Police Department's 2020 budget, and in that budget, it set in motion a plan over the next several years to increase Police Department staffing by four new positions, which called for community service officers, sometimes referred to as station officers. These community service officers would be civilian employees, not sworn officers, and they would have a dual responsibility of being a police officer or the ability to take reports, make police reports at the station, but also would be trained as a dispatcher so they could be handled both. These individuals would take care of, and I can just name a few. We have walk-in reports. We average over 100 of them a year inside the station. Fingerprints, we do 200 to 250 of them a year. We handle outside arrests in the station. Those are about 100 a year. And then we have anywhere from 50 to 100 people walk in and just want to talk to an officer. So the station officers would be able to handle that and eliminate the need for having an officer come off the street. We have an officer come off the street to handle these things probably three, four, or five times a day at least. So, and as well as these community service officers would also be able to handle dispatching duties so that in times of really critical function, serious types incidents that take multiple people, they would also be there as a second dispatcher, and also during the rest of the time be able to give the dispatcher a break, which we currently are not able to do. The position was funded for the entire year of 2020, but it was agreed upon the time it was approved that we would not fill this position until we completed our staffing study that is currently being done. That position, that staffing study, and so we still have not filled that position. But the staffing study is near completion. I've actually been privy to a rough draft, the preliminary draft, but you will be presented with that staffing study at the June 29 workshop, so we'll have it completed by then. So, our initial proposal that we submitted, when we submitted this staffing, or this 2021 budget, was to move or change our part-time dispatch position that we currently have into one of these full-time station officer positions. But being privy to the staffing study that, or at least the preliminary draft, the professor that did this study is recommending that we change that halftime dispatcher position to a full-time dispatcher position. So the effect on this budget that we're presenting you is going to be minimal. Actually, it could be a possible slight reduction for our dispatcher versus a community service or station officer.
Chief, can I, do you mind if I break in for a second?
Absolutely.
So, yeah, the world's going crazy. It's kind of on fire right now. One of the things that, I should probably have my microphone on. So, one of the things that is being called on, and not that to fund the police side of it, per se, but is a relook at how the peace officers or police officers are interacting with the public at large when there's nothing wrong, when it's more, which, by the way, we do, you do, you've implemented this. So, a pretty tremendous job of officers being part of H2A meetings, putting on events, going to the schools, all this kind of thing. So, as we're looking at these additional dollars to go towards community service, you know, civilian employees or another full-time dispatcher, I wonder if there's additional things that we can do or a little bit more time with the officers instead of having to come in and do paperwork or be at the front desk some, to do some additional things within our city. Maybe you've already planned that and you're probably getting ready to say it next, and I'm preempting that. Please don't say that, that's what's going to happen.
There, actually, I am going to go into a little bit of that later, but some of that will also be addressed in the staffing study that you'll get on June 29. Part of the things that go into the factors of our officers, when they're looking at the numbers that are needed, it's not just crime rate and it's just not population, but it's also call loads, and to have a valid police department, you need to have a certain amount of time for those officers to do those kind of things. They can't be just going from call to call. And I think that number is around 30% of their time, but all of that will be in the staffing study, and we'll be able to go into more of that at the workshop.
So, in the staffing study, it will actually answer what I just said. What is it, if I were to ask the question, what are the things outside of policing, what are we doing as a police department as far as?
There's a slide coming up that is listing a lot of those things. We do a lot of things in our community that other police departments either don't do or can't do because of their staffing or because of their call load, because of the crime they have in their community. So, there's always more that we can do, but at some point, you got to figure how much money do you want to spend and at what point do we start bringing things back? I'll give you an example. In the early 80s in Wichita, they started, there's a lot of calls that the Wichita Police Department doesn't make. You call and make a report. You're sent to a person on the phone and taking that report over the phone. Things like stolen autos. You have your car stolen and you come out, they don't come out and take a report. You'll take it over the phone. A lot of their calls. We're not at that point yet. Someday, as our population grows and our numbers grow and our crime grows, we may have to look at those things.
Is there a helicopter in here?
There's no helicopter there.
I have a drone you can use.
There is a drone, somewhere in there.
So, I would say, since we're under our microscope, every department, just assume they are, I feel like we're pretty far ahead of most departments, and I'd like to give out a shout-out to that, and as well as...
I'm going to cover a little of that, too.
I know, as well as, well, why am I even talking there? Because I like talking. Is, no. I know, I know I do, it's fine. I say that in my second voice, that it's fine. So, I guess, I do think that it would be probably smart for us to have an answer when somebody tries to pick on us, for lack of a better way to put it, to say, well, this is what we're already doing in community, whatever. We can always grow it, but we want you to know, we already are aware and have been attacking this issue for years, really.
And I have that, and some of that's in this presentation, specifically for that reason.
I guess I'll let you do your presentation.
Some of it. I'm skirting on it. We do so much more, I couldn't cover it in the 17 minutes that I originally started or planned on.
I just doubled that for you, you're welcome.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Where are we at? This chart here, basically, I wanted to share with you our increase of personnel over the last seven years since 2014. We've only added one new person. That was in 2017, where we went from two civilian staff, one civilian staff member to two on the Police Department side, and that was when we added our accreditation manager. If you'll see, there's one more person that's been added, it's on the blue line, that is that station officer in 2020, but as I said earlier, we haven't added that yet. It's been budgeted, it's been budgeted for the whole year, but we promised we would not, until you get a chance to review the staffing study and the recommendations over the next five years, and then we will go forward with this position and possible others. Okay. I also wanted to show you, these are, these are the cities I usually like to compare our Police Department with. You can see they're close to our size. You can see where of these, what is it, eight cities, we are, we have the most, the highest population there, but our staffing, this is sworn officers, is towards the bottom of this staffing. This is current as of today, with the exception of Arc City has just added another officer, and they're at 27 officers, sworn. So I wanted to share that, just basically to show you that our staffing level is not out of line with other departments throughout Kansas.
Chief, is this full-time or is this full-time plus reserve?
We do not have reserve officers, and...
I mean, I guess the other cities, is this full-time?
That's full-time staff, FTEs.
This doesn't include, like, the reserve department?
No.
Okay.
No, these are all full-time employees, and because of our accreditation standards, anyone that wears this uniform has to have the full training that we have. That means the 14 weeks at the academy. We can't put a reserve that, a lot of departments have a reserve programs, they go through a two-week night class, and then they put an officer on the street. We don't do that. So, I just wanted to share this with you in comparison to, to compare our numbers with other cities, to show you that we're in line. Additionally, when it comes to civilian staff, I don't have really good numbers on this for the other departments, but I can tell you a study that was done by the Police Executive Research Forum back in 2013 showed that a police department typically have about 30% of their staff is made up of civilian members from the Police Department. We currently, with 8.5 civilian staff members, that is 25% of our department, and we have a 911 center in that, too, that's included in those 8.5. To compare it with one of these agencies, Arc City, which is very similar to us in size and staffing, they have five civilian employees and they don't run a 911 center on top of their 26, now 27 officers. Give you a few stats. In 2019, our officers responded to 21,873 calls for service. That's a 7.7% increase from 2018. They stopped, they made almost 3,000 vehicle stops, wrote over 1,600 moving citations, over 1,200 warning citations, and over 50 parking tickets. They responded to almost 500 alarm calls, over 450 animal calls, 276 disturbances, 45 of them being domestic violence situations. They worked 260 motor vehicle accidents and made 260 arrests, 21 of them being DUI arrests. I share those numbers with you because of this slide here. I wanted to emphasize this and highlight this next slide. With all of those calls for service, reports, vehicle stops, and arrests, we received one citizen complaint in 2019, one citizen complaint in 2018, and three in 2017. In fact, over the past six years, we have averaged 1.6 complaints from citizens a year. Basically, that's unheard of from most police departments and something I am so proud of our officers and our staff. It goes to what you were saying, Mr. Taber, about our department and the things we do in the community. What's even more remarkable is over the last six years, we, three years, and only five complaints, during the same time, we made over 64,000 calls. We wrote over 5,100 police cases. We made almost 10,000 vehicle stops and issued 54, over 54, or almost 5,400 citations and made almost 1,000 arrests, 950 or something. And we ended up with five citizen complaints out of that. Our officers do their job, they do it right, and they treat people with respect. Other services, this goes along with what you're talking, we're talking about earlier. I'm not going to go into all of them. We have a lot of services we provide that other agencies, like I said, may or can't do. But a couple of things I want to point out, our Police Department is nationally accredited, currently one of only about 10 in the state that is nationally accredited, and we're one of only two that have the advanced accreditation, which means we subscribe to a value and practice, best practices in the country. We have, in our advanced accreditation, we have over 300, 350 standards that we must meet to obtain that. Our 911 center is, became the first 911 center in the state to be nationally accredited earlier this year, and they subscribe to those same standards. Following suit, we were just notified, the Highway Patrol, and actually, they called us the other day asking for help because they are now seeking accreditation for their 911 center. They'll be the second one when they, when they achieve that. In 2019, our city was highlighted as the second safest city in Kansas, and by USA Today, I think, I think I had this right, the 38th best city in this country to live, only one in the top 50 in Kansas. And I have to believe that, obviously, our low crime rate is a part of that, but I think the police services and the prevention programs that we have play a big role in that. I'm only going to point out a couple of programs that I'm very proud of. One of them is our Facebook that we reach out to the community and through social media. We have over 7,700 followers for a city our size. That's, I think that's pretty good. Our prevention programs, including our open garage door, I don't know of another city that has them. Obviously, Mr. Homer knows about it.
Is that another one? Oh, okay. I guess I left it here.
I think that's a important part of our community that keeps it safe, and another one of our big programs, and I think you mentioned this, Mr. Taber, our HOA and our Neighborhood Association partnership that we have, where we have all... HOA and our Neighborhood Association partnership that we have, where we have officers attend the HOA meetings and the neighborhood meetings to keep that communications going. And a part of that, that we don't get as much recognition is, is our partnership with the local businesses through the Chamber of Commerce. We have detectives that attend Chamber of Commerce on a regular basis and, and so that we can have a two-way communications with our businesses. So, before I get into the actual numbers of our budget, I want to share a little bit about our vehicle maintenance and replacement process that you should be aware of. Typically, our officers drive approximately three-hundred-thousand miles a year. This year, or I'm sorry, in 2019, we were a little bit low. It may be because we were down four or five officers throughout the year. But we were, we put in about two-hundred-and-forty-thousand miles last year. We currently have twenty-two vehicles, fifteen are marked units and seven are unmarked units. Our vehicle replacement process generally gets seven to ten years out of our vehicles and usually in excess of a hundred thousand miles. We replace approximately three vehicles per year, which helps us maintain a, a quality and a reliable fleet of vehicles. Our patrol vehicles, the marked units that you see on the street, we typically get seven to eight years out of them and a hundred-plus thousand miles. Our unmarked units, they're usually signed to one person. We generally get ten-plus years out of them and a hundred-plus thousand miles. This year, as an example, in 2020, we'll be replacing three vehicles and those vehicles average a hundred-and-twenty-thousand miles on them. One of them, I think, we're close to a hundred-and-sixty or a hundred-and-fifty-thousand miles on it. So, that's where we decide on our replacement process. Now, moving into the budget, this is the proposed budget for 2021, which includes our contractual, it's our operational budget, which includes contractuals, commodities, equipment reserves, and capital improvements. We start out here with this first slide for our contractuals, which are for services, things that you really can't touch. They're for like services, our utilities, gas, water, fuel, software programs, vehicle repairs, training, that's what comes out of this budget. As you can see, we reduced this contractual portion of our budget by seven-point-one percent, or approximately twenty-four thousand dollars over what's budgeted this year in 2020. Also, you can see, the first column is our current 2020 budget. The second one is the police and 911 together. The third column is our police, just our police budget. And then, the small one at the far right is what we need for our 911 center. So, you can see that was only less than ten thousand dollars in contractuals for our nine, for our 911 center. The next slide is our commodities. These are things that you can actually put your hands on and touch. These are things like equipment, supplies, uniforms, weapons, ammunition. These are actually physical things. We reduced this area by five-point-five percent from our 2020 budget, approximately a reduction of about eight thousand dollars. You can also see the very far column of our 911 center, that is only about twenty-four hundred dollars of the entire one-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand-nine-hundred budget. The next column is our capital improvements. These capital improvements are things which cost usually over five thousand and have a useful life of expectancy greater than five years. This one, we were able to reduce by ten-point-four percent, or a total of thirteen-thousand-five-hundred-dollar reduction, reduction under our twenty, twenty budget. I'll go into the capital improvements. You can see that zero of the capital improvements are for communications. Our capital improvement items that are included in the one-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand-five-hundred dollars for 2021 include two police vehicles. These are both patrol vehicles at about forty-two thousand apiece. And that includes all the extra equipment and installation charges for those two vehicles. It also includes the replacement or upgrade of our electronic ticketing program that we use, the officers, the handheld units. We purchased them in 2013. As of 2021, they're no longer going to be supported by the company. And we're in the process of transitioning away from those handheld units. And we're going to utilize the tablets or computers that are in the car. We've been working with IT so that we won't have those anymore. The officers will be able to print them right out of the cars, the tickets. So, and that's something we were going to have to do because it's, like I said, our current equipment is no longer supported by the company after this year. And that's at a cost of sixteen-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty. And the last thing, the request is to purchase of a portable messaging board at a cost of fifteen-thousand-six-hundred-and-fifty, which we want to use for emergency messaging, road hazardous conditions. And basically, it'll be available to all city departments where we can get messages out about events, upcoming concerts, just anything you can think of. And it'll be portable, we can move it around. So, the overall budget is operational budget. As I said in the very first slide, I wanted to hit that off right at the bat, eight-point-one percent reduction, approximately fifty-one thousand under what we budgeted in these areas a year ago, or in our current year of 2020. And as you can see, the, on the final column, our 911 communication center only makes up about two-point-two percent of our overall budget in these areas, slightly under thirteen thousand dollars. Most of their equipment and stuff that they need comes out of the 911 funds that are separate from these. They come off taxes off of cell phones that we get from the state. So, last slide is basically an overview of all of those together, the contractual, commodities, capital outlay, equipment reserves, the reductions we made, and which comes up to the total of the eight-point-one. This year's budget is six-hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand-eight-hundred-and-thirty, and we're requesting for 2021, five-hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand-and-six dollars. Couldn't find a way to cut that six dollars. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer. Any questions?
Sorry, Chief, I do have a couple of questions. Of those eight cities that were mentioned in your slides, how many of them have the E-911?
I don't know that any of them do.
Is there anyone else in Kansas that has?
Augusta?
Okay.
That's the closest one, the others, but Augusta's one.
And then, I guess what's the benefit of us having our own E-911?
Well, I really wasn't sure we'd get into this tonight, but I can tell you, as you can see, we, we took a hard look at our numbers when putting together this budget. And we looked at the things and, and we realized that even if we did not have a 911 center, we still need this in our budget. We still need to have the computers, we need, still need to have our records management system. We still need to have our recorders on our phone lines and on and on. So, as you saw in the budget, there's very little that we would give up in the area of contractuals and commodities and capital improvements. It's a very small budget. The only thing you're going to look at in reducing those numbers is, or savings would be personnel. And I already said, you know, just even Arc City without a 911 has five civilian employees. And here's another thing that you need to consider, with five, with five employees, we basically would run a police department and we would be open eight to five, or eight to four-thirty, or something like that. We would close our doors and would not be open to the public at night. To be able to be open to the public at night for people walking in and stuff, we would need those additional people, the staff. Our dispatchers are not just dispatchers. They're our records clerks. They process our claims, our insurance requests for copies of reports. They do a lot of that stuff. So, they're not just. So, bottom line is, depending on what kind of services you would want to cut, if we had to close our police department at five o'clock, we would have to change some things and some of our expenses would go up. I can't tell you exactly what that would be, and I don't know how much it would be. Some of our expenses would go up. The first thing off the top of my head, our jail expenses would go up because we would no longer be able to bring prisoners back to the police department. Right now, we can put a prisoner in a holding cell and if an officer needs to, he can go on, he or she can go on a call because we have a dispatcher with cameras that can monitor that person in the cell. If they weren't there to monitor that person, we wouldn't be able to leave that person. We would be taking all of our prisoners to El Dorado. And you're pretty much eating up minimum of two hour, hours out of an officer's day by taking that prisoner up there. So, there's things like that, that we would have to totally change on how we do our business at the reduction of just a handful of people. You know, like maybe we, a reduction from eight-point-five to five or six. And like I said, unless you wanted to keep the building open. So, and, and really, I think your question, why do we do that? Quality of service. I will tell you, our dispatch and the personal service that we give our citizens in Andover is muchly improved. I'm not bad-mouthing Butler County 911, but our services is much improved. I gave you an example of a call last night at two o'clock in the morning. We got a call from a citizen whose toilet was overflowing. Guess who responded? They called our 911 and we had an officer go out and help him. You don't see that in every day. And that happened last night.
Well, heck.
So, those are the kind of things, the services that would not happen with an outside agency.
And I was just, you know, kind of pivoting off what Troy said in regards to the knowledge for the community, some of the questions that I've heard in the community are the 911 tax, you know, on cell phones. So, that's why I just wanted to...
Okay, to answer that, your 911 tax, you're going to pay. You're not going to get, if we do away with our 911, you're still paying. Every phone and every cellphone is charged that tax. The difference is that tax money is going to go to, to the 911 center that handles our calls. So, we would lose that and that pays for a lot of the equipment and software and stuff that we have in ours. So, you know, it really boils down, I'm not going to sit here and tell you, we would not save money by closing the door. I will tell you, it's not going to be as much as what you would expect.
Thank you.
You take Arc City, their budget that doesn't even have a 911 center is significantly higher than our police department budget.
Thank you for that.
Not at all.
You also mentioned on the portable sign, I noticed that was sixteen thousand dollars. Do we not own another portable sign in the city or, and/or, I thought you guys had a trailer for a sign, no?
We have a radar trailer on the police department. There's no signage on that, other than your speed.
You probably see that a lot, though, don't you, those speed traps?
Wow. I mean, just because I got the garage warning?
You might be thinking of, Les has a really strong relationship with a construction company who, or a gentleman that does those signs for construction, construction warnings, and they will allow us to use those for concerts. And so, that's the time you might see those out at Wendy's or Applebee's.
That was my question as well.
I will tell you that I know the mayor, I've heard the mayor talk about wanting signage that we would be able to get more information out. I promise you, Mayor, we had this in our proposal before I ever heard you say that.
Thank you very much, Chief. Just a couple more questions, sorry. You mentioned, it kind of skinned over it, but the dispatchers don't get a break or, I mean, do you have the cop come in off the street then to relieve them?
We do. We put all of our officers through what we call a rescue dispatch. And so, all of our officers have been trained. They know enough to be able to answer those phones and if they need to, they can get the fire department out or a police officer out. They're not going to be able to handle a major incident or at least get it documented into the system, into our CAD system like you would normally, like the dispatcher would. But pretty much, twelve-hour shifts. Daytime's a little different because we have Director Day here with us or there, and we have our records and evidence custodian that's generally there Monday through Friday. So, during those times, we always have someone that can give them a break if they need to use the restroom or go. But the rest of the time, in the evenings, they, they have a bathroom that's about six feet away from their control console that they can go into and their head systems are, I don't know, Bluetooth or, you know, they, they work in there. And, but typically, no, they're twelve hours, they're in that, they're tied to that console.
Thank you. One more question and I'm sorry.
Taking up Troy's time.
I know, right? I'm trying to set a record here. So, just another question, and you may be kind of skinned over it for the public, but I, I know we're accredited and I think that's awesome. I believe it's CLEIA accredited, police department. How many other police departments in Kansas, to your knowledge, are, have any type of accreditation?
There's approximately ten, I said earlier, that are CLEIA accredited. There's only two, us and Riley County Police Department have the advanced accreditation. The difference is that, and they're both accredited, I'm not minimizing the other accreditations at all, they, they subscribe to or, or practice approximately a hundred, hundred-and-fifty standards? I'm sorry?
Hundred-and-seventy-six.
They, about a hundred-and-seventy-six standards that they must meet when they're evaluated. We have, ours, the advanced, has about three-hundred-and-fifty, I think. So, ours is a little more in-depth. And it takes a lot more work to do that, but, but like I said, there's ten agency, about ten agencies in the state. There are several that are in the process, there's two or three that are in the process going towards it. Highway Patrol just got theirs. Derby got it? They, they got their initial accreditation in March when we got our third accreditation. And, but there's one or two others that are going through it right now. I, I think, given the circumstances in our country right now, there probably will be more getting on board with that.
That was my next...
And there's no, to answer the other part, there are no other accreditation, there's no other accreditations in, in Kansas. Some states have a version of accreditation in their states, but not in Kansas.
Okay, thank you.
So, does this accreditation, I think I've asked this before and I can't remember, so I apologize, does this give us a, a break on our workers' comp for the police? What, is this just bragging rights that we...
Liability insurance.
Liability, okay.
Liability. And what it does, our accreditation gives, does a number of things. Number one, it reduces our liability. Thus, we have reduced, I think it was fifteen percent initially off of our liability insurance. It doesn't offset the cost of accreditation, but it, but it helps.
Because we have the cost of the accreditation and the cost of the accreditation person, too.
Right.
We have that payroll that we have to pay.
The, the cost of the fees, the funds or the dues that we pay pretty much is almost covered by the...
Savings?
The, the savings. But the person, obviously, is a, is a charge. But what it does is it reduces our liability. Agencies that are accredited are less likely to get sued. And if they are sued, they're less likely to lose that lawsuit because they have the training and the documentation and the background to defend those lawsuits. It, it makes departments more transparent because of the things that we're required to report. Our policies are all online, available to the public. Every year, I give you and the, and the city our complaint investigation information, how many complaints were received and how they were investigated. There are so many things that we do. It also gives our public and our elected officials the confidence that our department, because it's not just me telling you we're doing it, we bring in outside experts that come in and evaluate us. So, it gives you the confidence in the ability that your agency is doing, your police department is doing things the way they're supposed to. And the last thing, it gives me a better ability to be the CEO of this company and make better decisions because I don't base them off gut feelings. A lot of the most critical things that are affecting other departments, such as use of force and police pursuits, every year, we have to do an analysis on this because of our standards. We do a full-blown analysis on how many we had, what the reasons were, what the outcomes were, and they put together an analysis and, and I get those. So, when we look at our policies, I can make better decisions. It's not just a gut feeling of, well, we need to change this. It's based on actual analysis and, and studies.
Thank you, Chief.
I can tell you, my short time as mayor, that I've called chief on two or three things that people have said that transpired with our police officers. And in short order, he got back with me and let me know that they were not valid and he was more than happy to go through the video and tape with, with them if they'd like to. And no one, I mean, no one took him up on that offer.
Do we have body cams? Sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Glad you had that. We've had body cameras, this is why I'm saying, there's a lot of things and there, and there's reform that's needed across the country. I'm not here, and I'm not going to tell you it's not. But in our police department, we are well ahead of the curve. We've had body cameras on all our officers since 2012. That's two years before the Ferguson incident. We have, we've had in-car cameras... We have, we've had in-car cameras since-
Ever?
Well, not ever, but at least since 2007. And I know there was something else I was gonna say that, but can't think of it right now. Oh, I know what it is. There's a big call for the elimination of chokeholds. We've had a policy in place since 2010 prohibiting chokeholds, and we've had the practice of prohibiting chokeholds long before that. So we're, we're in a good position. Do we have some work to do? Absolutely. Are there more programs that we can do with our community? Absolutely.
And you don't need a storage shed? Is that, you were just trying to save some money?
That's in this year's budget.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I was looking at this wrong.
That's this year's, and we just haven't got to that yet. We still need that, we're overflowing with some stuff, but we haven't, with the COVID-19 and the parks, people are so busy, it's, we haven't done that yet.
Any other questions?
Excellent job.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
At this time, we will go into executive session. We are on item 18, that is an executive session for the purpose of consultation with the city attorney for discussion related to attorney-client privilege. Can I get a motion to recess into that session?
Mr. Mayor, I, Homer, move to recess into the executive session for consultation with the city attorney pursuant to KSA 75-439B2, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. The session is to include the governing body, city administrator, assistant city administrator, and the city attorney. The open meeting will resume at 9:42.
I would-
The number was off by one, is that what you're gonna say?
Yeah, just, just two little things, it's actually 4319B2, not 439. And Derek Casey from Triple Wolf and Garrettson will be joining us as well.
Thank you for that amendment.
That's gonna be the modified.
So moved.
And I would also ask that, since it's a late night, those staff who are not necessary for the executive session would be released to leave unless you have a specific question during member items, then they could certainly stick around.
Absolutely. That'd be fine.
I would second the motion. Troy? Chief Russell needs to stay though, sorry.
Les, before you run off, I want to thank you for your service too. Now, he's a longstanding city employee, and man, you got so much knowledge that most of us will never know if we worked the rest of our lives here. And he's always there for me when I call him, I appreciate it. I do appreciate it.
Chief Russell, I was just kidding, I apologize.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Most-
Make a motion to reconvene?
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries six zero. Executive session has transpired. Member items. I guess we're down to member items. Let's start at my left with Homer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to reach out. I know we're limited here, but I just want to get it on the record. I do want to thank the pastor for the invocation at the beginning of the evening. It is sometimes hard to get up in front of people and talk. And I thought that was really cool what he had to say. And I'm willing to break bread with whoever wants to come over and maybe sip on some beverages as well.
Some bread.
And eat bread. Soaked bread. And again, I want to thank Levana too for keeping us up to date on what the thoughts are at the golf course and the community surrounding it. And I think it's great what we're doing with Kelsey's Dance Studio, the other dance studio, to help kind of reinvent what we can do with the amphitheater in these times where we're not going to have concerts, we're not going to have movies. And get out there and support them. I mean, it is a fun venue to even just sit at and read a book too. So the more we know about it, the more we let the community know about it, I think is awesome. And you know, we always thank the dispatchers and fire and police. But I mean, I think tonight after hearing sometimes the breaks on the dispatchers of 911, I want to give them a shout out and say thank you to those folks. Becky and Mrs. Day and all those people that do the dispatch for our E911 and make Chief Keller look good. So I appreciate that. That's all I have for night. Thank you.
Homer, I'd like to ditto everything you said. And Chief, when you're talking about 12-hour shifts and not being able to get up and do really much of anything, that's really impressive. So hats off to those folks to do that.
Chief, next time it'd be better if you said, Mayor, I liked your idea of the video deals. It'd be a lot easier to get stuff approved, knowing that the mayor is a bright individual.
That's why I put it in there, so.
No, I appreciate what you do. I really do. Especially in these times, it's a scary, scary venture every time y'all go out. And I just worry about y'all and I pray about y'all and the police, police and fire both. It's a, when I know things are going on and we have conversations, it has an impact on the way I go about business and sleep and all that. We really care about y'all, obviously, right? So thank you for what you do. I appreciate it.
Ditto again on everything that's been said? I have a question about something completely different. We happen to buy a few more things than normal from Amazon lately, and I know that we pay tax on it. Do we receive tax to the city of Andover for stuff bought on Amazon?
You do. Any, I believe the threshold's around $10,000, but it's a pretty low threshold. If a company does that much business in the state of Kansas, then the sales tax is charged. And so the sales tax that you're paying, the one cent that would normally come here comes to City of Andover. That is strangely why our sales tax has not suffered in the pandemic to date, is because there was a lot of ordering happening, it appears, from homes and things that maybe you wouldn't normally find in town. So we'll continue. That's called, we looked it up today, comp usage.